Good evening colleagues, please do take your seats. Good evening council, before we start the formal business this evening, each and one of you will be aware that Covid rates in Newcastle and nationally are extremely high and that the Omicron variant is very transmissible. Unfortunately, the legislation does not allow us to meet virtually and as a result, we have had a lot of apologies this evening. Many of our councillors and staff are isolating and others are understandably concerned about the impact of testing positive and spreading infection to family, friends, colleagues, and many have caring responsibilities. On that basis, the aim is to keep the length of this evening's meeting to a minimum and I hope that members will support this. Please avoid moving around or leave the room unless of course it's absolutely necessary and do feel free to wear a mask throughout the council meeting if you feel more comfortable with that. Can I remind all speakers using the microphones, please use the hand sanitizers and wipes provided on the lectern. Speakers will not need to turn the microphones on and off as this will be controlled automatically. Thank you, moving on to item one, apologies, John, will you read out the apologies please?
Thank you Lord Mayor, we have had apologies from councillors Alan, Ally, Avery, Barnes, Beecham, Bell, Cairns, Chisholm, Copley, Forker, Gallagher, Heim, Marsh, Huddart, Ryan Hunter, Lawrence Hunter, Ion, Lambert, Lovett, Lawson, Mitchell, Poswell, Wirth, Schofield, Shatwell, Hazel Stevenson, Stokel, Walker, Webster, Williams, Dave Wood, Margaret Wood and Stevie Wood.
Thank you very much, yes councillor.
Thank you very much Lord Mayor, I just wondered whether the members who aren't able to attend could be marked down on this occasion as agreed not to attend as many or most of those members are not attending because of the issues with the coronavirus and the new variant that we're all concerned about at the moment. I seek some advice from you Lord Mayor about how these absences can be recorded but I think it's really important because some members have made a decision not to attend not because they aren't available this evening but because of the issues that you yourself raised at the beginning of the meeting, thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Cot, do we need to provide a response or not have that noted? Okay, yeah. We'll provide a response, a written response to all councillors shortly, soon. Thank you very much, moving on to item two, minutes of previous meetings, does council agree the minutes of meeting held firstly on 6th of October 2021 as an accurate record? You can speak up councillors, thank you very much, second one, does council agree the minutes of meeting held on 3rd November 2021? Thank you very much. Item three, official announcement, I would like to take this opportunity on behalf of all elected members to offer a very warm welcome to our new chief executive, Pam Smith, who is over there, hi Pam. Welcome to the council meeting, on behalf of council I would like to congratulate all those with a connection to Newcastle who were recognised in the New Year's honours list. Also, on behalf of council, I would like to congratulate the active inclusion team for being presented with this World Habitat Award, here it is. Awarded in recognition of the council's approach to homelessness, our relative success is demonstrated by the local government association's figures that in June 2021 illustrated that Birmingham had almost 7,000 children in temporary accommodation and Manchester over 3,000. In June 2021, there were 44 children in Newcastle temporarily accommodation and we have not used bed and breakfast to meet our homeless duties since 2006. The council is very proud of the great partnership working that helped to Newcastle win this prestigious international award. As tonight's council meeting will determine the council tax base, I would like to remind members that the guillotine will fall at 9pm rather than 8:30. Item four, correspondence, does council agree to receive the letters from the Department for Work and Pensions, HM Treasury and the Local Government Association? Thank you. Item five, petitions, no petitions were submitted this month, moving on to item six, public question, we have received one request to address the council, I will now invite Tamar Pittman to give her address virtually before asking councillor Penny Evans to respond. Whenever you're ready, Tamar.
Good evening Lord Mayor and councillors, the Newcastle biodiversity action plan was launched in 2001 and a 10-year joint action plan with North Tyneside Council was approved in 2012, this year should see the launch of a new one. Given the climate and ecological emergency that we're now facing, plus the Environment Act of 2020 are making provision for biodiversity gain to be a condition of planning permission, it's imperative that we stop taking our local wildlife and habitats for granted. Our precious green spaces are under threat from development, our city needs new homes yet most built on the outskirts of the city, increasing urban sprawl and reducing local habitats. Crucially, the new developments are severing important wildlife corridors such as the buffer area around Havana nature reserve, the much-loved former skate park at West Enton is similarly threatened with development. While I appreciate that the city council have been working with developers and other stakeholders to encourage nesting by providing new nesting boxes and protecting some areas, much more must be done. Large housing developments such as those at Great Park and Scotswood cause disruption while the works are underway and reduce habitat availability. It's laudable that the new environment act will make provision for biodiversity gain as a planning condition, but it's far better not to reduce biodiversity in the first place rather than encourage wildlife back after it's been driven out by development. For example, the presence of the rare dingy skipper butterfly at the Eltzig heliport site prevented development there, yet the same butterfly is present at Havana which is currently threatened by plans to build houses around its south-eastern border creating an impenetrable barrier to wildlife to the east. I'd like to ask what more the city council will do to protect our wildlife and their habitats from the threat of further development? Will you produce a new biodiversity action plan this year that will detail the Environment Act's requirement for biodiversity gain as a planning condition? Will you create management plans for Newcastle's nature reserves, wildlife corridors and other green spaces? Planning decisions to date put the need for new housing over biodiversity, so will you pledge to put the needs of wildlife higher up your agenda by declaring an ecological emergency in addition to the climate emergency you've already declared? Since submitting my question, Rachel Locke of Save Newcastle Wildlife has told me that an ecological emergency had been declared last summer, interestingly neither the city council's website nor Google search knew of this when I searched prior to submitting my question, so apologies for that but I did check first, thank you.
Tamar, I... I hope Claire Penny Evans clearly heard that and made that, if you could respond please?
Yeah, yeah, thank you Tamar for your question and yeah, I'm sorry you were unable to see that but yes, thank you, it allowed me to reiterate that we did last June declare ecological emergency in our June full council and had unanimous support across the council and we also showed support for the government's climate and ecological emergency private members bill as well and pledged to write to our MPs and to campaign on that issue. So I think we are mentioned on their website and we did try and promote that, so I'm sorry that you weren't unable to see that. I think it was really important that we took that decision last June because it's such an important issue and we know that the government's not just doing enough really on this. I wanted last year to stress it because we wanted to embed nature into our net zero plans because the government are severely lacking and we know that actually in the UK, you know, we are part of a biodiversity crisis. So in terms of what we're doing in Newcastle as well, you know, we think it's really important which is why we brought that motion, I would reiterate to please have a look at the minutes from the June council meeting, but we also value the work that we're doing here in terms of green spaces, the work we've been doing around promoting biodiversity in terms of bee corridors, we're looking to implement bee-friendly roofs and bush shelters, we're also looking at wildlife habitat corridors, we're strengthening our renewal in our net zero action plan and in terms of our biodiversity action plan which Tamar mentioned, you know, this has been being looked at and work has started on it, but we were waiting for the government's publication of the environmental bill so that we can include the nature recovery strategy and the regulations in that new biodiversity action plan. In terms of other things we've been doing, we've got the, we're looking at the local nature recovery strategies, we're looking to what we can establish cross and working with Gateshead, Sunderland, South Tyneside, North Newcastle and North Tyneside to look at a local network, we've got an up-to-date suite of planning documents which include core strategy, urban core strategy, but we're also looking at our new biodiversity nature SPD and also some other planning supplementary documents and including our green infrastructure and open space plan, all of which I'm happy to send to Tamar if she would like to have some links to some of these policies rather than go into further detail this evening.
Thank you councillor Evans, Tamar, do you have anything else you wish to respond? Thank you very much, maybe not?
To ask that those links are sent to me, that would be great, thank you. I would just like to point out that I have had a look at those minutes and I couldn't really see anything new in there other than the pledges to promote the CE bill, unfortunately the local MPs so far haven't said that they are going to be supporting that which is a real shame. So with regard to biodiversity gain as a planning condition, it would be great if you could look into that please in the future because there is a great deal more that the city council could do to work with developers and try to encourage them to take responsibility because currently they exploit our city and reap the profits while our biodiversity gets poorer, thank you.
Tamar Pittman asked councillor Evans in her initial response, offered to provide further update, I will request her to offer those if there is any to be had, thank you very much. Moving on to item seven, reports referred from cabinet and committees, seven air treasury management mid-year report, in accordance with standing order 13b, this report is deemed to have been moved and seconded by councillors Kilgawa and Forbes, does... I believe we might have somebody who wished to speak on this, Ferguson, can you confirm that? Okay, thank you very much, does council agree the recommendations? Thank you. Moving on to item eight, council tax and business rates, I will now call on councillor Forbes to move the report, seconded by councillor Kilgawa. Councillor Forbes, I presume not many people have heard that, could you come to the lectern and repeat that please?
I move the report Lord Mayor, I don't intend to make a lengthy speech but will do my best to answer any points that members raise.
Thank you very much, I don't believe I cracked a joke when I asked councillor Forbes to come and confirm that, can I call on councillor Kilgawa? She has seconded on the right to reserve to speak, can I invite councillor Cot to speak? Councillor Cot is responding not to speak, on my list we have councillor Ashby.
Thank you Lord Mayor, I have a few brief comments on tax base of the city and although the guillotine is extended by half an hour for this purpose, I doubt the topic will detain us long despite its importance. Firstly, I note and I'm pleased that the simplification for assessing self-employed income for council tax support approved by us in 2018/19 will recommence this year, it's important that we show support for our self-employed where it's needed especially in these difficult times and the simpler we can make processes the better. Secondly, I note the complexity in setting the base for business rates and I'd welcome further and better particulars from officers, the business community very much now have financial skin in the game in how we pay for services in the city and I request access to the consultations which have been carried out with representative bodies and those local businesses who are not represented. And lastly, I note that the base for our parish councils is part of the document we are asked to approve, some of them are benefiting from new house building in the north and outer west of the city, there's no cap on their precepts, it's to be hoped that councillors in these, in their areas are liaising informally with them to ensure that as much as is feasible, we're all singing from the same hymn sheet in supporting our residents and for the benefit of all given our financial position, thank you Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor Ashby, those were the individuals who indicated to speak, can I therefore invite councillor Forbes? To respond, thank you councillor Forbes.
Thank you Lord Mayor and as members will know from the report, the council tax support scheme has been revised in light of the pandemic and I'm delighted that significantly more people will be assisted through the council tax support scheme in the coming year than in the previous one, we estimate that over 10,000 households will be better off because of the changes outlined and because of the removal of the non-dependent charges, a further 4,000 households will be better off. For those members with a short memory, of course the council tax support scheme is something that we've had to put in place after the abolition of council tax benefit back in 2012. The business rates base is of, as councillor Ashby recognises, of ongoing concern to us, the five-year reset is long overdue and I believe that the business rate base which is of course based on properties is no longer reflective of our rapidly changing economy and one of the significant pieces of national lobbying that's being done through the local government association is to rethink the nature of business rates to make it feel and seem fairer for all businesses that are affected. And the point that councillor Ashby raises about parish councils is one in which really residents need to take up any concerns they have with their parish councillors and I'm sure that the issue around local precept will be of very healthy debate in the coming months in those parish council meetings and I'd like therefore to move the report Lord Mayor and ask council to fully support it tonight.
Thank you councillor Forbes, those were the individual who indicated to speak, can I now invite everyone to move, sorry, vote on this? Can I now invite everyone to move, sorry, vote on this item? So on your devices, those who are unable to access your devices, do hold your hands up, and I will come to you whenever it's possible. Can we start voting, please? Does that everyone have voted except of, yes, I see you councillor, I see you there. Anyone from the left? You have successfully voted, well done. Can we come to, yes, can I ask you to confirm your name? Just stay there, loud as possible, I'll repeat, and your vote, please. Councillor dot supporting. Okay, Far End, yes councillor, can I ask you to confirm your name and your intention? Councillor Byrne is supporting, and can I come further left here? Can you confirm your name councillor and your intention? Councillor Powers voting. Have I missed anyone? No. Oh, I have missed someone. Have you successfully voted? Yes, excellent. What's the, what's the result, please? I can't see behind me. So that's voted. That was, now everybody can see the result except me. It is carried forward. Thank you very much. Can we move on to item nine, question by members? One question for oral reply is set out on the agenda from councillor Smith to councillor Penny Evans about the tree policy. One marked for written reply has been circulated, the response was included in the supplemental agenda and also published on the website. Can I invite councillor Evans to respond to that question? Or do you want to take more questions? You need to respond to this individual question first. I assume you've had the question because it's not before me? Yep, thank you.
Oh, sorry, Lord Mayor. Yes, the short answer is no. We have recently reviewed our tree policy. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank councillor Smith for raising this, because you know, the damage caused by Storm Arwen was absolutely shocking, and it wasn't just in Newcastle, it was across the region. And obviously, residents were all concerned about the safety of the trees, but you know, our new policy that we implemented actually puts the safety of trees at the top of the list, and it's something that we've just recently reviewed and agreed. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Evans. Councillor Smith, you do have the opportunity to ask a follow-up. Do you wish to do that? Yes, you do. Whenever you're ready.
Thanks, Lord Mayor. Many of the cases that have been raised with me relate to trees that are very close to homes, where the concern relates to damage that is caused to property by huge branches coming off in high winds, fears that the tree is unsafe, and houses that are in perpetual darkness. Often, the tree was quite small when the person moved into their home, but it now towers above, and often, all they are actually looking for is for the tree to be maintained, not cut down. What message does councillor Penny Evans have for residents who do not understand why a single tree damaging their home cannot be tackled, yet vast numbers of trees have been cut back next to the A1 and in housing developments in the outer west? Residents wonder why big companies can decimate tree stock and hedges while the council refuses to tackle problem trees in our neighbourhoods. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Smith. Councillor Evans, you are required to respond to that if you are able to provide a thorough response.
Yeah, thank you councillor Smith. Councillor Smith will be aware that the work that's been carried out on the A1 is actually not something that's been done by the council. However, it has been agreed that any trees that have been felled by the Transport, Department of Transport, will actually be replaced two-for-one. In terms of the, what I would say to residents is, is please get in touch. You know, it's not a static process. We will certainly look at what we can do in terms of the tree. We have a review process that we're going through. It's not a computer says no to every actual one. It's about looking at the individuals and risk assessing and looking at the threats. So I would suggest that residents got in touch so that we could have a look at those individual cases.
Thank you councillor Evans. I have on my list councillor Donnelly, you wish to speak, is that still the case?
Still the case, Lord Mayor.
Yeah?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. The council has been left in a vulnerable position by their previous decision to remove the post of tree inspectors, who recently might have been reinstated. Unfortunately, there is a backlog of work. The decision seriously affected basic maintenance, which used to be carried out across this city. The council formally would thin trees. This was to thin the canopy of the tree and maintain its balance. It's called crown thinning. Does the council feel that it is appropriate, in their words, to tell residents that they are not entitled to light, or satellite, or TV, or phone reception, block drains and gutters, and the height and the size of the tree not being taken into consideration? Whilst I, like many others, understand the true benefits of trees across this city, can the cabinet member agree with me that we definitely need to be more flexible with this policy? Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor Donnelly. Councillor Evans to reply, please.
Yeah, thank you, Lord Mayor. I would just reiterate that this policy has recently been reviewed, and it might be a chance that members have a chance to relook at the new policy. We have done considerable investment in, with new resources around this. We recognise that some residents in our city are experiencing these issues, and we are upping our frequency of inspections, and we will do our best to look at these on an individual basis. You know, and obviously, as councillor Donnelly says, trees are incredibly important to us and our city, and increasing the canopy across the city is something we really, really want to do. That's why we're being so pleased with the incredible investment we've got within the tree portfolio, tree area, in terms of the North East Community Forest that we're looking at. But it ultimately is the right tree in the right place, and we recognise that over the years, sometimes a tree has been planted or has been planted by other sources, such as rooting by droppings or whatever, is not necessarily the right tree. So I would just say that, you know, this is going to be looked at on an individual basis, and we will definitely be looking to see what we can do to support residents across the city.
Thank you councillor Evans. There is one more question. Councillor Stone.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I thought I would ask a supplementary on this question, just to make by way of making, passing reference to the storm Arwen, in which we lost a number of trees in my ward, and I would like to pass on thanks to the council crews who responded very quickly the next morning to clear the trees which had fallen, blocking certain roads in my ward. On that wider point, though, in response to councillor Smith's question, it's, I noted that, well, as we'll be aware, this year is the Platinum Jubilee of the Queen, and one of the initiatives that's been announced in the Jubilee celebrations is something called the Queen's Green Canopy. Can she, can the cabinet member give me an indication that the council will look to participate in that by means of planting more trees, and hopefully to look at planting some replacements for some of the trees that we lost as a result of Storm Arwen?
Thank you councillor Stone. Councillor Evans?
Yeah, thank you councillor Stone for raising that point. Yes, the council may be aware, I think it was, might have been the October council meeting where we received correspondence to say that we were a Queen's Green Canopy Champion City, which meant that we have been at a highly prestigious award because we're really involved in what we're doing in terms of the Queen's Jubilee. We've already identified some sites that have been out from consultation around planting for the Queen's Jubilee celebrations. One of those is in the Blakelaw Ward. But in terms of replacing some of the trees with Storm Arwen, what I would say to people is, is that our resources in terms of the North East Community Forest means that we have a lot of trees to plant, we have the resources to plant trees, street trees, hedgerows, trees across our city. And if any member is interested in having a tree in their ward or replacing a tree, please email us on thenortheastcommunityforest@newcastle.gov.uk. And the same for any member of public who's out there who's interested in wanting a tree on their street or a tree in their area, please get in touch. Obviously, the planting season ends in end of February, March, but we will be looking to do a much more increased planting season next year, which starts in the November. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor Evans. Moving on to item 10A, climate change and public safety and education and skills. Members have had these reports and they have been published. I understand that it has been agreed that members will send any questions that they would have asked via email, and that cabinet members will respond within a suitable timescale copied to all members for info. And I believe the same agreement is also for item 10B, educational skills. So can I therefore deal with 10A? Does council, oh, let me confirm who those speakers to 10, those speakers for 10A would have been? Councillor Kane, councillor Taylor, councillor Ashby, councillor Hall, and councillor Donnelly. They were going to pose those questions, who will now provide via an email to the cabinet member in question, excuse me. Of course, it will also be published on the website too. So does council agree to receive the report 10A, climate change and public safety and education and skills? Thank you very much. 10B, so 10B is education and skills, and I can confirm those names that I have before me wishing to ask question were councillor Morrissey, Ashby, councillor Donnelly. Same again, if you could submit those questions via email and a report, response will be had within a suitable timescale and of course, published in our website. Does council agree to receive the report? Thank you very much. Moving on to item 11, appointments. Are the appointments agreed are set out on the supplemental agenda? Thank you, I heard agreed. Moving on to item 12, notice of motion, elect, yes councillor Cot.
Lord Mayor, I'd like to move under standing order 3D that we move forward in the agenda, item 19 on the remote council meetings. So I'd like to move that if possible, thank you.
So you would like to move that to discuss at the start of the motion, I believe?
Correct, yes.
That's the request, is this agreed?
Agreed.
Is this agreed?
Agreed.
Do we need a vote? I believe it's somebody's dead second that.
Yes, sir.
Come on, council, talk to me, do we need a vote or is this agreed?
Let's say yes.
It's agreed, so therefore, we will deal with item 19. Notice of motion, remote council meetings, can I invite councillor Cot to move the motion and to be seconded by councillor Forbes? Councillor Cot?
Thank you, thank you very much, Lord Mayor, and thank you for council to agreeing to put this forward first, because it is an issue which we have agreement about across the council chamber. Now, Lord Mayor, we know that councils across the country and including Newcastle have been working hard since the start of the pandemic to manage the impact of coronavirus and to take action to improve public safety. And I'd like to put on thanks, put on record my thanks to all staff and agencies and all residents in Newcastle for their hard work and understanding during this period. Councils have been under considerable pressure, but were for many months able to manage their business and accountability through increased use of online working, particularly around management of the business of council and making decisions. Accountability didn't suffer, and in Newcastle, we were able to use technology to improve access to the public, as well as having an eye to protecting members and officers at meetings. The government unfortunately pulled the rug from under us with its decision to prevent councils continuing to use online elements for business and other democratic meetings where formal decisions needed to be made. And I think that was a very regrettable decision, which we all share a view about. Now we are in another phase of this crisis, and we have not been given any further assistance, no guidance from central government in relation to this issue, and we face difficulties. I'm pleased that we are united in sending a message to government about these issues, that we want more flexibility, not just for now during the pandemic, but also looking into the future. We are not opposed to physical meetings, of course we're not, we want to see those happen where appropriate, but we would like greater flexibility, so our accounts and others can put in place the measures that are suitable both now and in the future, and have discretion about that. Lord Mayor, the motion sets out how this approach is more inclusive, making business more flexible for people, for instance, with disabilities, people who are infirm at present, people who have childcare arrangements and so on and so forth. It promotes our shared perspective, which we've talked about today, around climate change by reducing travel. It would help to save money on meetings and could be more accountable as well. Of course, we have our council meetings on YouTube, residents can tune in and watch those if they so wish, and it increases participation. So, Lord Mayor, I'll keep this fairly short for me, and I recommend this motion to council. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Cot. Councillor Forbes to second the motion?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. This council was one of the first to fully embrace digital ways of working, and I would like to pass on a huge thank you to all of those members who have learnt new skills, learnt to use Teams and Zooms, and what felt alien a couple of years ago is now second nature. And many councils ground to a halt. Some of our neighbouring authorities didn't have meetings for months and months, but we kept democracy going because we used the power to hold online meetings very effectively. There's a quirk, of course, in the legislation, that although the government gave us temporary permission to hold online meetings and haven't renewed that, which is why we're having to meet in person tonight, licensing and regulatory hearings can be heard online because they're covered by a different part of the law. That clearly makes no sense whatsoever, and it's clearly of benefit to members, to those that wish to engage with us through our meetings, and to demonstrate that democracy is continuing despite the challenges raised by the pandemic and the restrictions that we've all had to live through, that we have the option to be able to run online meetings or hybrid meetings where we think that they're fit. That is simply a very straightforward ask of government that I cannot understand why they don't grant to us, particularly as it was granted to us last year. And it's particularly galling, Lord Mayor, that while we are not able to do this, at least one of the Houses of Parliament has the option to do it, and in fact, uses it. The House of Lords meets as a hybrid house perfectly normally, and in fact, I've been to give evidence at committees where there'd been a hybrid structure, and it's all worked absolutely fine. So there's no reason why we can't get on with this. It would alleviate the real challenges, the worries and anxieties that people have of coming to a physical meeting like this, and it would ensure that we are able to make the best decisions possible at the time to ensure that democracy continues in this great city. So I second the motion and urge colleagues to support it.
Thank you councillor Forbes. Can I invite councillor Smith, who indicated to speak at this motion? Councillor Smith?
Lord Mayor, before the pandemic... Lord Mayor, before the pandemic, virtual meetings were the exception rather than the norm, with many people travelling all over the country to attend meetings. We have proven that it's possible to organise successful meetings virtually involving large numbers of people. Face to face, however, allows much better human interaction and relationship building than electronic meetings allow. I support the motion to give us greater flexibility with meetings, but we do need to be careful about not replacing all face to face meetings with virtual meetings. Councillor Donnelly's motion talks about the challenges of getting through meeting agendas. Uh, the motion points out that the number of council meetings were reduced to save save money, but virtual meetings might allow the number of meetings to be increased um to have a real op uh kind of option around uh different types of meetings. Lord Mayor, as I said, I'm happy to support the motion, um but we do need to make sure that virtual and hybrid meetings uh add add value and improve the service that we give to residents rather than diminish it. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Smith. I have no more names who um indicated to speak, so can I invite councillor Cot to reply unless there's anybody who wish to speak? No councillor Cot, thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate colleagues' comments, uh both from the leader and the leader of the independent group. Um, they they are very welcome. I think we do have to be careful, as councillors have mentioned, about making sure that uh we don't exclude the possibility of face to face meetings because they are important, but we do need to have flexibility. Maybe this will help us to get the right balance uh with our meetings. Uh, and I look forward to us being able to push this agenda uh with central government and also experimenting with what we can do uh with the technology that's available. I know we've had an issue tonight with the 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 kind of the hybrid stuff, but maybe that's an area that we can explore in more detail moving forward with some planning and uh and consensus across the chamber. It's a pity about central government, um we have to keep working to put pressure on central government. I know the LGA is looking at this and working very hard, um and we ought to be able to push this uh at uh opportunities that we have locally and anything we do on the national stage um with other elected members to try and push this forward. And we need to write to the minister and we need to get our local MPs on board uh with this issue as well as the motion mentioned. So thank you very much to colleagues, I'm pleased that we're united on this. Thank you very much, Lord Mayor.
Thank you very much councillor Cot. Uh, so therefore this motion is agreed or do we need to vote on it? Agreed, thank you very much. Now, going back to item twelve, notice of motion, election bill. As councillor Ion is unable to be here, he has indicated and requested this to be deferred. So this motion will be deferred. Councillor Kilgawa, you are asking if this motion could be dealt with tonight with the proposer being absent and against their wish? Can I just confirm that? Thank you. So I have been uh informed that councillor Ion has confirmed in writing that he is happy to consent and for this to go ahead. So, uh, twelve, I have no individual who were uh going to speak, so first question is who in councillor Ion's absence will be uh proposing this motion? Councillor Gray, is that, and do we have a second? Okay councillor Kilgawa, councillor Gray, yes, thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd like to start by thanking councillor Ion for bringing this important motion to council. Lord Mayor, the motion makes reference to a number of important points and some of the fundamental failings of the elections bill. The government would have you think that at each election, great hordes of people commit voter fraud and that our electoral system is rife with this sort of criminal behaviour. But Lord Mayor, this rather dystopian and Trumpian-like view of our elections couldn't be any further from the truth. Out of the tens of millions of people across the country that voted in the twenty seventeen general election, there were only three hundred and thirty six cases of alleged electoral flaw, uh fraud. Only eight of those people were cautioned and there was just one conviction. Rather than this being about the integrity of our elections and our democracy, this bill is at the most a part of a power grab by the Tories. They want to suppress voting and take people's voices away from them. Libertys said, in a healthy democracy, everyone should have the right to vote. However, introduction of mandatory voter IDs is a very real threat to this right. If you're young, if you're a person of colour, if you're disabled, trans, or you don't live at a fixed address, you're much less likely to have a valid photo ID and could therefore be shut out from voting. Lord Mayor, this complete lack of regard for our democracy is no surprise. Over the last two years, it is increasingly felt like the foundations of our democracy are built on sand. We've been lied to at every turn, eye tests, parties that weren't parties now garden, parties that apparently were meetings, flat makeovers, backhanded contracts to ministers, a secretary of state unlawfully approving a billion pound luxury housing development being developed by a Tory party donor, even more dodgy Covid contracts. And what feels like the cherry on top of the corruption cake is when an own practice MP was found to have breached the lobbying rules and after the ruling found that he'd repeatedly lobbied ministers and officials for two companies paying him more than a hundred grand a year, he escaped his suspension after his fellow Tories voted to overrule and rip up the independent cross party committee which recommended it. These actions clearly show that the government couldn't care less about the integrity of our democracy. They'll rip up the rules to protect their mates and potentially disenfranchise voters through Trumpian-style voter suppression tactics. Lord Mayor, Tory corruption and cronyism is truly back. So if the Tories are really concerned about the security of our democracy, I'd take the, I'd suggest they take a look closer to home, rather than trying to disenfranchise young voters, people of colour, disabled people, trans people and potentially many more. Lord Mayor, as councillor Ion's motion says, the government should change course and register the nine million voters who are eligible to vote but are currently not on the electoral rolls. The government should focus on enhancing our democracy, not sticking this millstone round its neck. Lord Mayor, thank you, and I move the motion.
Thank you very much councillor Gray, councillor Kilgawa to second.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I think um councillor Gray covered all of the points we would want to make. I would only wish to reiterate his point that there's more evidence of illegal parties in Downing Street than there appears to be for illegal um or voter fraud. So with that, I would um second the motion. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you very much councillor Kilgawa. Um, of course, for reasons we haven't anyone indicating to speak to this, I'll open her up to the floor. We've got, uh, yes, councillor Taylor first.
Sorry, I'm sure my name was put forward, but anyway, um, I just got a quick point I want to make. Um, as this motion points out, there are helpful measures in this bill, particularly in regard to people with disabilities and overseas voters. But like councillor Ion, I'm totally opposed to voters having to show photographic ID before being allowed to vote. As has been said, identity fraud in polling stations is extremely rare, so this measure can only be intended to make it more difficult for people to vote and will have unintended consequences. For example, there must be many people, women like myself, who have chosen to keep their maiden name for work and that's also the name on the electoral register. Some years ago, however, I chose to change my passport and driving licence to my married name to make it easier when travelling. My previous passport had also known as Dr Wendy Taylor printed at the back, but in spite of my request, this was omitted on my current passport, so I now do not have any photo ID I could show at the polling station. Would I be expected to take my marriage certificate every time I wanted to vote? And what about people who don't drive and haven't got a passport? How are they supposed to get have photo ID? Is this bill in fact a way of forcing us to have identity cards in future? Lord Mayor, photographic ID for voting is unnecessary, undemocratic and would be a total waste of valuable public money, and I strongly support measures to get this section of the bill dropped. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Taylor. Uh, councillor Campion.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Democracy is a cornerstone of our country, something that we as elected representatives should understand better than most, and I'm pleased that this motion has come to council. I think we can all agree the best election is one where everyone has the ability to vote if they so wish, where barriers are reduced and voters are informed. At all levels of government, be they our brilliant parish councils, local, devolved or national, we should be striving to increase participation, not reduce it. To see such a harmful bill being pushed through parliament by an anti-democratic conservative government makes a mockery of our British values that I and others ensure hold so dearly. What does disappoint me though is the complete lack of mention of one of the most undemocratic parts of the current electoral process, the voting system we use. First past the post is an outdated system that puts a minority view ahead of a fair and majority consensus. Put simply, it's undemocratic and unfair to the electorate. To have a motion calling for a more democratic approach to voting that fails to mention the archaic system we use is frankly shooting wide on an open goal. We should have used this opportunity to push the government on proportional representation, a more fair and equal voting system. What makes it even more confusing that this hasn't been included is that at the most recent Labour Party conference, the majority of local parties have finally seen the light and joined the Liberal Democrats in calling for proportional representation, even if this was then voted down by the party as a whole. I would hope that all colleagues across the chamber can come together to support the principle of proportional representation, underpinning a fair electoral system, to take the lead, ride the wave of popular support and call on the government to implement a truly fair system. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you very much councillor Campion. Now, we are, we aren't a hundred percent certain, but we'll give this to you, it's twenty twenty-two, we believe this might be your maiden speech, so well done councillor. Can I ask, um, I don't have any others who indicated to speak, so therefore can I ask, is this motion agreed?
Agreed.
Oh, beg your pardon. Can I come back to the mover if they wish to reply? No, I hear, thank you very much. So this motion has been agreed. Thank you. Moving on to item thirteen, notice of motion, roads and pavements, can I invite councillor Taylor to move this motion and to be seconded by councillor Ashby? Councillor Taylor?
In this recent report, cabinet, councillor Bell acknowledged that the highways network is the most valuable asset of the city council, that Newcastle currently has a maintenance backlog of a hundred and eighty-four million pounds, seventy-five million on roads and a hundred and nine million on foot baths, and that over two hundred streets in Newcastle have more than eighty percent of the length needing treatment. This is simply unacceptable. We know that the condition of our roads and pavements is a major concern for our residents and there can be serious health consequences for a frail or disabled resident if they trip and fall due to potholes or uneven pavements. And cyclists can also be seriously injured if a pothole causes a fall. Councillor Bell also claimed at the October council meeting that to address the problem of broken pavements and potholes now would bankrupt the council, but that is a ludicrous claim, as other councils such as Stockport, Southend and Kent have had very successful capital investments. Councillor Bell also claims in his amendment, I understand he's not here today, but in the amendment that's on the order paper, that the only solution is for the government to provide the funds needed, but he knows that that will never happen. About fifteen years ago, the Liberal Democrat administration of this council put forward a well researched and considered bid for funding to the then Labour government. It was rejected. If Labour councillors believe that this or even a future Labour government will come to the rescue, they are living in cloud cuckoo land. Of course, maintaining good highway condition on residential routes, non-priority routes has always been difficult, as historically budgets have been steered towards the priority network to improve performance on footway and carriageway condition indicators. In twenty sixteen, the Asphalt Industry Alliance and in annual did an annual independent survey of local authority highways departments in England and Wales and showed that if all authorities were given the budgets required to fix their roads, it would take English authorities fourteen years to catch up with the current backlog. So how would a capital investment work? Well, in Stockport, in accordance with the principles of the council's Transport Asset Management Strategy and Action Plan, officers developed a model that was independently verified to consider the whole life costs of maintaining the highway asset. The model demonstrated that a significant investment over a nine-year period would provide an appropriate approach to managing the asset. Subsequently, video condition surveys of the highway network were commissioned to develop a detailed understanding of the road and footway conditions and to build a case for a new approach to investment. In twenty fourteen, Stockport Council's executive agreed a highways investment programme with the aim to improve the percentage of roads and pavements in the worst category to only ten percent for carriageways and thereby mitigating the revenue pressures on the reactive maintenance and insurance budgets. They estimated this would require a total capital investment of approximately one hundred million pounds over a nine-year period and went ahead with this scheme. The investment is via prudential borrowing. After just two years, the percentage of pavements in the worst category reduced from thirty-seven percent to fifteen percent. And in the last seven years, Stockport Council has saved over one million one hundred and sixty-eight thousand on their highways maintenance budget. The savings are of course not just from reduced repairs being necessary, but from reduced insurance and claim costs, and these savings have helped to fund the loan repayments. Newcastle Council has a large capital programme and is well used to funding capital schemes via prudential borrowing, with loans being paid back over many years. All we are asking for in this motion is for cabinet to prepare a business case for a capital investment in our roads and pavements with the aim of making them safe for pedestrians, cyclists and motorists and to make a major improvement to our local neighbourhoods. Please support this motion.
Thank you councillor Taylor. Councillor Ashby to second uh the motion.
Thank, thank you, Lord Mayor. Uh, I'm seconding this motion tonight because councillor Pauline Allen has, along with other councillors, at the request of the leader of the council, agreed not to attend the meeting. Uh, she was ready to second it at the last meeting of the council, uh but because of the guillotine, uh was not removed, was unable to do so. Uh, she's provided me with the words she'd prepared and I'll I'll read them in a moment. I had, I had also intended to speak in support of the motion and so make the point that as a part-time cyclist, that our cycleways need investment too, even if it's just the application of a coat of paint to differentiate them from the highway used by motor vehicles. And there's a specialist, where there's specialist cycle lanes, they need care and attention. Those in Gosforth, for instance, are thick with a mulch of leaves. When it freezes, as a few days ago, they're really lethally slippy. Uh, councillor Allen has written, uh, for most of our residents, the emptying of their bins and the repairing of roads and pavements is the only service that they see the city council providing for them. And I think that it's true to say that many residents in the city aren't very happy about the latter as they fear falling because of the uneven pavements or damaging their cars on potholes in the roads. Four months ago, I had an accident and broke my ankle in three places, and apart from being very painful, I learnt a few things which have stayed with me. Firstly, it was how kind and wonderful people are. After my accident, a small group of complete strangers cared for me and made sure that I was taken to hospital for the attention I needed. I remain really grateful to them. Secondly, it was how wonderful and overworked NHS staff are. They operated on my ankle and put me on the way to recovery. Then thirdly, I saw for myself how difficult it can be to get around on a zimmer frame or crutches, especially when the footpaths and roads are not in a good condition. I've long been concerned about the condition of our roads and pavements and the fact that this can have on the lives of the elderly and disabled amongst us. And becoming temporarily disabled illustrated to me just how important it is to improve pavements and roads. Using walking aids or a wheelchair requires a lot of effort. It can physically hurt your hands and arms and you have to be constantly looking out for defects that might trip you up and cause further injury.
Councillor Ashby, you've got one minute remaining.
Okay, uh, bum bum, I will, I will cut through then saying, uh, I accept that the backlog of repairs now needed after years of neglect is an expensive one, but surely we need to be looking after the health and safety of all our residents, especially those not in the protective bubble of cars. Uh, on behalf of councillor Allen and myself, I second the motion.
Thank you very much. Uh, there is a amendment which to be moved by councillor Kilgawa to be seconded by councillor Penny Evans. Councillor Kilgawa.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Um, I'm standing in for councillor Bell tonight, who unfortunately is poorly with Covid and can't be here. Um, the notice of motion from councillor Taylor outlines various elements that are factual and taken from information. and taken from information that the council releases each year. What I take issue with is the implication that we don't always consider the potential for other ways to deliver our services if that would create efficiencies. For example, we're asked in the motion to create a business case for investment. Officers keep track of the likely impacts of such a business case every year. To maintain the current condition of the road network would require an investment of approximately £9.3 million per annum. Any investment below this optimum level will result in a deteriorating network. A business case can, of course, be prepared for varying values of investment and how this would improve the conditions of the roads and pavements. However, as other local authorities have found, I believe including Newcastle, who are still paying off the past loan for investment taken out by the previous administration. And while short-term prudential borrowing can initially improve the condition, excuse me, this would not provide funding for maintenance, and a sustainable long-term level of funding needs to be sought. We either take on more debt that constrains our ability to do proper maintenance in the future, or we continue our current course to continue to lobby government for appropriate levels of funding. Of course, we accept that public want more to be done on roads and footpath maintenance. It is, however, worth noting that based on the only national study that compares public perceptions into things like this, Newcastle had a higher satisfaction rating from the public than the national average. And the thing most important to people about their highways was, understandably, safety. We will continue with our programme of investment to maintain and improve our city's highways and make them safe and accessible for all. Can I please move the amendment, Lord Mayor?
Thank you very much, councillor Kilgawa. Councillor Penny Evans?
Second the amendment, Lord Mayor.
Seconding the amendment, thank you very much. Can I invite one speaker has indicated, one name I have, councillor Ferguson?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I will endeavour to keep my comments brief. The first point that I would like to come to is one that I'm not entirely surprised at all that I have to make reference to. Councillor Kilgawa mentioned the previous Liberal Democrat administration's investment in roads and pavements through borrowing. This is a subject that comes up with almost metronomic regularity. I have said it before in this chamber, and I will say it again, that I have asked as many questions as it has been possible for me to ask to seek assurances that when that borrowing was taken out, it was done so on a prudential basis, on a funded basis. That has been confirmed to me. And if this council continues to pay the borrowing that was taken out over 11 years ago, the simple reason for that is because the Treasury Management strategy that this administration has approved and endorsed shifts debt from short-term to long-term commitments. Now, I don't really understand why this keeps getting thrown back at us whenever it is this administration's choice to push borrowing into longer-term commitments. That may well be the most appropriate way to deal with debt, that is absolutely fine if that's the case, but it seems to be very confusing for the administration to use its own Treasury Management choices to criticise the previous Liberal Democrat administration. So I've said it before, I have no doubt that I will say it again in this chamber, but I'm saying it again this evening, and I look forward to the next time that this comes up so that I can reiterate the point again. I think it is pretty obvious that well-maintained roads have fewer potholes to repair. A well-maintained road network is better for the city, presumably costs less in the long term. I don't think anyone in the chamber would deny that central government needs to grapple seriously with the funding implications of the highways network being in the condition that it is across the country. But one of the things that is often absent in the conversation in this chamber at a local level is the reckoning of the full costs of the ad hoc repairs that we undertake and the compensation costs for any damage or injury that may be sustained as a result of roads and pavements not being maintained adequately. I recall just last year working closely with a resident who fell in Pink Lane in the city centre, who contacted me, not out of any self-interest, but because, as the point was made to me by her, Pink Lane could be one of the first streets in the city that any visitors to Newcastle would happen to come along to. She fell quite seriously, was very seriously injured, but her overriding concern was about the impression that visitors to the city would have from the condition of the roads and pavements that we have here. We've been told previously...
Could you conclude?
Certainly. We've been told previously that investment would bankrupt the city. The borrowing limit is £196.3 million above what is currently taken out, as has been noticed in a previous item on this agenda. No one's suggesting that we would want to use all of that to cover all of the roads and pavements maintenance, but it surely beggars belief to suggest that the council couldn't do just a little bit more to maintain its road and pavements network through prudential borrowing. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Ferguson. Can I invite councillor Taylor to reply?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I don't accept the amendment. I know that we will not get this money from government, and the roads will continue to get worse and worse if we don't do something about this. The way the council repairs potholes at the moment is a complete waste of money. They break down almost within months, and if you don't believe me, just come and look at some of the streets around where I live. They are in a shocking state with partly repaired potholes and new potholes next to them. And as a cyclist, I resent the fact that so many roads are so dangerous and uncomfortable to cycle down. How on earth can we expect people to cycle in our streets and take up cycling when it's so uncomfortable and difficult? So many roads have been dug up, and just to give an example, Freeman Road, near the hospital, they amended part of the road, but when I asked for the whole street to be done, I was told there wasn't enough money, and yet it is extremely uncomfortable cycling up and down that road. So I don't accept that it's not possible. If other councils can do it, we can do it, and let's just get on with it and do a capital investment and pay it back over many years. We can afford it, and it would be gratefully received by the residents.
Thank you, councillor Taylor. I did hear the amendment is not accepted, so therefore we will move on to vote the amended motion firstly on your devices. Voting on the amendment on your devices. If you're unable to vote, do have your hands up, we will come to you. Is that... Those successful to vote, except those who have raised their hands? Thank you very much. I don't see any more hands here. Thank you. Yes, councillor? So that was against. So one, two, three, were you against? Were you against? Okay? Oh, I can't see. Against. So we've got four verbally agreed against because they weren't successful to access their digital devices. What does that do to the magic figure? Okay, so 41... Sorry. So 27 yes and 15 no, therefore the amendment is voted in. Can we now agree if the amended motion is agreed as the substantive motion to replace the original motion? That's a no, so we require a vote? On your devices again, please. Was that you couldn't access your device, councillor? Okay, I see one hand. What's your... Four. Sorry, what's your intention? Voting intention? We don't need your name at this point. The very first one I required the councillor to shout their name is for legal reasons. So what's your voting intention, councillor? Abstain. Any more hands up from anywhere? No, I don't see. What does that do? I probably need to... Will you shout that to me? 27 in favour? 16 abstain? The amended motion is accepted, becomes a substantive motion. That's number 13 concluded. Moving on to item 14, notice of motion, improve democracy by ensuring that council business is fully covered, debated and discussed. Can I invite councillor Donnelly to move this motion and to be seconded by councillor Smith?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. It is worth remembering that it was back in 2015 when the council proposed to move away from 10 meetings a year to only eight. The justification at that time was to fall in line with other neighbouring authorities. It must also be noted that the Constitutional Committee even considered that four meetings could potentially be enough to cover basic statutory requirements. The problem that arises is that there is insufficient time to cover council business, ensuring that important issues that affect the daily lives of residents are discussed fairly, openly and transparently. Knowing that 184.3 million savings have been made since 2015, you would have thought that it was essential to spend more time, not less, being able to debate these important matters. Within the Newcastle City Council Charter, meetings are described as the people's forum, and we, as elected members, are expected to protect and enhance their rights to full proper access all year, every year. True democracy must be seen and heard in action as often as possible if we are to expect the public to support and contribute to the many decisions that we have to take in this council. People must have more opportunity to make their presence felt, not less. I was ridiculed when I raised the concerns about council meetings being reduced at the council's AGM back in 2015. I don't believe anybody could seriously say that we are able to get through full council business effectively at the moment, and many matters are too serious to simply delay for a further month to take the matter to a vote without discussion or debate. The words of the leader of council, in a world changed by Covid, it is even more important that you have a council which is on your side. So from the leader of council's words, councillors who are advocates for their residents should have the ability to raise, debate and discuss matters within this council without it being cut short by the guillotine, which falls at half eight. Democracy must not be stifled, and I hope this evening we can vote to improve and enhance the people's forum for the sake of our residents across the whole city. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Donnelly. Councillor Smith to second the motion. Second the motion, Lord Mayor, and reserve the right to speak. Thank you very much. We have received two amendments to this motion. I will ask for each amendment to be moved and seconded, and then we will have a single debate before voting on each amendment in turn. Can I invite councillor Woodward to move the first amendment, seconded by councillor Ferguson? When are you ready?
Yeah, Lord Mayor, I will be as briefer than I normally would be. Tonight is a very different meeting from how we'd normally conduct affairs, and we are cracking through our agenda really well. That isn't always the case. I would urge those members, all members, to feed into the informal meeting of Constitutional Committee that's taking place next week to discuss standing orders. We need to get something that, as my amendment says, shows that we do have a beating heart of democracy at the heart of our city, and that's this city council. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Ferguson, who is seconding this motion. Seconding and reserving the right to speak, thank you. Can I call on councillor Kilgawa to move the second amendment to be seconded by councillor Jackie Robinson? Councillor Kilgawa?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I think our amendment's fairly self-explanatory, Lord Mayor, but I would say in response to councillor Donnelly that while full council meetings are very important dates in the municipal calendar, they are not the only way for members, or indeed members of the public, to participate in council business or the democratic process. A great deal of business is covered at meetings such as planning committee, constitutional committee, licensing committee, our climate emergency committee, to name just a few. Oversight, challenge and assurance are provided not just at meetings of full council, but also at our three scrutiny committees, audit committee, standards committee. Residents of Newcastle can attend or watch our meetings online and can have their voices heard in lots of ways, including participating in various consultation exercises on subjects as wide-ranging as our budget proposals, right through to the proposals for tree planting in some of our neighbourhoods. Democracy doesn't stop at the door of the civic centre either, Lord Mayor. Members can and should, and I'm sure do, engage with our residents in a variety of ways, in a variety of community settings. That's not to say our current system is perfect, far from it, which is why Constitutional Committee is reviewing council standing orders, and council officers have already started the process of benchmarking against other local authorities and bringing forward examples of alternative practices from other councils around the country. Far from extending the guillotine, Lord Mayor, in light of your earlier remarks and the ongoing pandemic, we should be trying to keep this meeting in particular as short as we can while still getting through council business. So I'll stop there. I move the amendment, Lord Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Kilgawa. Councillor Jackie Robinson to second the motion, amend, second amended motion? You formally seconded, did you reserve the right to speak? No, so you formally seconded, thank you very much. Can I invite councillor Cook, who have indicated to speak? Councillor Cook?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. It may come as a surprise to councillor Donnelly that I have a certain amount of sympathy with this proposal. However, the reality leads me to another conclusion. We've now faced unfair government imposed austerity for nearly 10 years, and reduction in the number of council meetings was one of the first actions taken to reduce council spending, and councillor Donnelly referred to that in his speech. But we're now over £300 million short of what we should have in 2010 terms. Nearly everything we requested to do in various motions costs money. Just imagine what we could do with even £100 million of that £300 million. And guess what? There's another £30 million to come, together with critical issues in the region's transport, which will need to be addressed. The sum involved is nearly 50% of our budget, 50%. Over half our budget is on adult and children's social care, services which thankfully the vast majority of our residents don't see. And on the other side of the coin, 72% of our housing is in council tax bands A and B. We're often contrasted with Westminster and Wandsworth councils' band D rate, which is about £650 in both cases. Those contrasts never point out that their council tax is just 8% of their overall income compared with 20% in Newcastle. That is exactly how unfairly we've been treated. In Newcastle, specific government grants, including revenue support grants, support amount to 22.8%, in contrast Wandsworth is 42% and Westminster 45%. So I therefore extend an invitation to councillor Donnelly and everyone else to join us in representing this issue to government, which is the true source of our financial problems. We could almost certainly be doing everything they ask for had we been treated remotely fairly, and they need to recognise that this situation in Newcastle and other adjacent councils will not change unless until there's a change of government. And I support councillor Kilgawa's amendment. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Cook. Can I now invite the seconder who reserved the right to speak on the first amendment, councillor Ferguson?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Democratic debate and scrutiny is of vital importance, I think we all agree on that. But I think it's important to under... But I think it's important to underscore that the council chamber and full council meetings are a powerful symbol of our civic pride. Whenever I was first elected and first went to a full council meeting, I was humbled to be able to participate in something that felt really quite significant for the city. So I understand councillor Kilgawa's point about the wider committee structure and the various means of engagement in democratic debate and discourse in the city, but I think it's important to reflect on the fact that full council meetings are the constitutional and symbolic linchpin of the city's democracy. I take councillor Cook's points on board about the financial implications, but I would like to observe that we have been able, it seems, to increase the number of cabinet meetings taking place over the course of this municipal year without really blinking. So surely it was within our means, particularly given councillor Cot's motion earlier reflecting virtual and hybrid meetings, that there are ways surely to think about how we ensure that that constitutional and symbolic linchpin, as I describe it, is fully and properly represented in the civic discourse. The key thing in the amendment brought forward by the Liberal Democrat opposition is, I think, that reflection on engagement with residents to ensure that the business the council is undertaking covers their priorities as much as our statutory obligations. But I'd also like to reflect on the mechanism of the guillotine, which does cause some frustration, I think, for many members whenever there are important items that are worthy, not just of simply nodding through on a vote, but of proper, full debate and discussion. If extending the length of the meeting isn't the appropriate answer, then I would like to explore what the alternative is. I commend the first amendment to the council, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, councillor Ferguson. Can I invite councillor Donnelly to respond, please? Sorry? No. I do beg your pardon, councillor Smith, you did reserve the right to speak, so councillor Smith first.
Lord Mayor, very pleased to support this motion and the Lib Dem amendment. I have to admire councillor Woodock. Every meeting we get to a certain point in proceedings, and he has to jump up, proposed standing orders are suspended, only to have it voted down by Labour councillors. I was surprised when I saw Labour councillors in Northumberland complaining about North umberland County Council meetings being shortened by Conservative councillors with business not being covered, while also complaining that some councillors were not permitted to speak. Clearly, Northumberland councillors have never been to a Newcastle City Council meeting where the guillotine falls half an hour earlier and where it is Labour councillors who are acting in the same way as the Tories in Northumberland by voting to prevent business being discussed. As the motion says, independents were given no opportunity to speak in the clean air debate, and then were criticised online for not putting forward an alternative view. As councillor Ferguson says, the city council needs to be the forum to represent all of the views of our citizens and the focal point of our democracy, whilst I do recognise that democracy doesn't stop in this chamber. Thank you very much, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Smith. Councillor Donnelly to reply.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Firstly, I would like to thank councillor Cook for his comments, and I can understand some of the points that he's raised. I think it must be placed on record that it's unprecedented, the amount of cuts which this authority has had to make because of the government and austerity. However, however, we need to speak with a clear voice to government to see what the message is from the people of this great city, and we can only do that if we meet and we discuss and we debate. That's democracy, that's open, that's transparent. If we are to stick with the current arrangements that we have, we need to change the council's constitution because it clearly states that this is the people's forum. While it's not the people's forum, if I cannot speak, it means things on behalf of my residents when there's important issues. Because the guillotine falls, and as councillor Smith alluded to, it's the same scenario every meeting. Councillor Woodock stands up, and there's another on the other side, and the same, the same situation occurs, where unfortunately the meeting comes to a close, the debate ends, and a lot of these issues aren't taken forward. Now, Lord Mayor, to end, there's a lot of skullduggery at times in here, and there's a lot of issues which we won't always agree on, but on a lot of occasions we'll come together, we're united, we stand on behalf of the people of this city, and we send a clear message to government. There's more that we need to do now because of the austerity, because of the global pandemic. So now is the time to look again, to see if it's a possibility of having more meetings, and at the same time, as what was brought forward by councillor Cot, there's the possibility where we could have possibly some hybrid meetings, or we could have some Zoom meetings on top of the traditional council meetings, just to allow debate, discussion, and as councillor Smith said earlier, before it was wrong in a previous meeting, when none of us, none of the independents anyway, could even speak on a very important matter which affected our residents. So, Lord Mayor, let's support the original amendment, let's look to improve democracy, let's look to, did we, engage in debate, and you might be surprised, on a lot of occasions we might actually agree. Thank you very much, Lord Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Donnelly. In all those speeches, I clearly didn't hear anyone agreeing to accept any of those amended motions. So firstly, can we go to vote on amendment version one? So that's presented by councillor Woodock and seconded by councillor Ferguson, so voting on amendment number one, on your devices. If you have any problem, just raise your hand. Is that a four? That was voting four. Is that, so what's the, what's the vote, councillor?
Sixteen in favour, twenty-eight against.
So twenty-eight against sixteen in favour, therefore can we move on to amendment number two? That's, which was presented by councillor Kilgawa and seconded by councillor Robinson. So we are voting on amendment version two, on your devices again. Is that everyone successful in voting? Excellent? Were you successful this time to vote?
No.
No, and your intention is?
Abstain.
Abstain. So what do we have? John, if you could read that, sorry.
Twenty-six in favour.
Twenty-six, four.
Five against.
Yep.
Thirteen abstain.
Thirteen abstain. So the second version of the amendment is carried on. Now we need to vote on the second.
Does it agree?
The second, does council agree to accept the second amended version of the motion?
Agreed.
I hear agreed.
No.
I hear no, so we, well, need to vote, on your devices again, please. So we are voting second amendment, which was voted against, the first one to become the substantive motion. You know what you're doing, go for it. Anyone unable? You, well, okay, what's your intention? Abstaining? Please, will you read?
Twenty-eight in favour, sixteen abstain.
Twenty-eight, four, sixteen abstain. That's it. So the second version of the amendment becomes the substantive motion replacing the original motion number fourteen. Moving on to item, item fifteen. Notice of motion, fair tax. Can I invite councillor McCarthy to move this motion, and I believe it will be seconded by councillor Powers?
It will, Lord Mayor. Can I move this formally? I think the motion that's before us is really clear. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor McCarthy. Councillor Powers?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I second the motion, and just wanted to add, as a proud member of the Cooperative Party and a Labour and Cooperative councillor, I wholeheartedly support the motion for the fair tax mark.
You are supporting the motion? Thank you very much. Councillor Powers, can I invite councillor Ashby, who indicated to speak at this motion?
Lord Mayor, the Liberal Democrats yield to nobody in our belief in fair taxes. I stood before the council and advocated that business rates should be replaced by a commercial landowner levy, levy which would tax land values, not investment. This would also spread the burden to companies who aren't represented on the high streets and would benefit Newcastle businesses substantially, while we're transferring part of it from the poorest English region to the best off. Recently, the Liberal Democrats proposed a tax on the super profits being made by gas and electricity companies and by petrol stations who haven't reduced prices while costs on the world market have fallen. This Robin Hood tax would be used to benefit tens of thousands of poorer households in Newcastle and would reduce our overall heating costs by £20 million this year. There'll also be more funding from it for, for energy efficiency measures. And I have on a number of occasions mentioned publicly that government action is needed on the profits made by multinational corporations and which are shipped offshore often instantly. While these enterprises employ people who pay tax, I think we'd all like to see them pay more profits tax in this country rather than amass billions of dollars outside the reach of democratic governments. We'd very much like the creation of wealth, a creation of wealth from robots and artificial intelligence to be taxed to fund a universal basic income, which would be particularly valuable to those on any sort of benefits. Having said that, I have concerns over the detail, some of the points in the motion and their implications. It seems to be saying the council is using offshore vehicles for land and property deals, or is that a dig at the developers of the new complex on East Pilgrim Street, which would bring many thousands of jobs into the city centre, revitalize this rundown corner and boost retail footfall? The threat to small contractors of robust implementations of the IR35 system, whatever that's supposed to mean, sounds like an attack on and lack of trust in many self-employed in the city. We should be encouraging small businesses to bid for work from us, not burdening them with extra paperwork, whose costs bigger businesses will just include in their prices. Do we not already have good practice in the council as the motion demands? If there is a suspicion we don't, we have a scrutiny committee and an audit committee who could be tasked with reviewing them. Enforcing national tax gathering is a matter for national authorities. We shouldn't be contemplating the tune army of business snoopers these proposals would require.
Councillor Ashby, thirty seconds to wind up, please.
Councillor McCarthy and I sit on the boards of a number of companies on behalf of Newcastle City Council, unpaid of course, and I'd be more than happy to support any proposal she might bring to them to apply a fair tax mark, to apply a fair tax mark. We all should celebrate the contributions businesses make to the city council's revenues. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Ashby. Councillor Ferguson?
Lord Mayor.
Yeah, wait, okay, thank you very much. Can I invite those with the speakers? Can I invite councillor McCarthy to reply, should you wish? No. Is this motion agreed?
Agreed.
Agreed, thank you. Moving on to item sixteen. Notice of motion, safety in night time economy, to be presented by councillor Penny Evans and seconded by councillor Kemp.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, I think the motion sort of speaks for itself, and I hope that everyone in this chamber would support the motion. Just before Christmas, I think it was the beginning of November, myself and councillor Hobson met with a group of people who were really concerned about the recent spiking reports, and we had a really good discussion with the representatives from the big night in, and had a discussion around how we could highlight their concerns, and one of the issues we decided to do together was to present this motion to council, just in order to keep that this, this issue remains high on our agenda and something that we as a city council are committed to. Lord Mayor, the evidence demonstrates that sexual assault is the norm in the night time economy, and it's seen as a cultural norm, and it's unfortunately women are no longer surprised about being harassed or assaulted, and it's, you know, and often never reported. The majority of women have said that they experience sexual harassment on a night out, and research shows that sexual harassment is regarded as more socially acceptable when it takes place in a bar, a street, or a public, or public generally. Alcohol is known to be utilised by perpetrators of sexual offences, both to target victims they believe to be vulnerable through drink, but also to disinhibit and reduce accountability for their own behaviour, and victims are often blamed for what happened to them because of the alcohol intake. A number of surveys have highlighted a recent minority of people believe that women are at least partly to blame for their sexual assault if they go on a night out or wear certain types of clothing or get drunk. So whilst Newcastle's night time economy is relatively a safe one, it is important that any incidents can have a significant impact on the individual concerned. And we believe strongly that everybody should feel safe within our city, and we value the diverse night time economy. We have some excellent partnerships working to deliver a safe night time economy, including the work that's mentioned in the motion, but also our work with our police and crime commissioner, who has recently introduced a safe travel app as well. I'm planning on going in in the next couple of weeks on a visit with the Women's Street Watch Patrol, another really excellent group within our city, again highlighting the concerns that they have of the night time economy. So, Lord Mayor, whilst we are doing everything we can, it is really important that we keep this issue high up on people's agenda and that we look to make sure that we can continue to do everything we can with our partners in our city. I hope everybody in this council chamber will, in this meeting, will support the motion. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Evans. Invite councillor Kemp, who is to second the motion.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Pleased, but also, I guess, disappointed and frustrated to be standing and speaking, seconding this motion. As a parent, as a father of two young daughters who are young teenagers expecting to be able to grow and develop and enjoy all that a night time economy of the city brings, I'm somewhat concerned and depressed that the behaviours and culture that exist, not in this city but across the country, prevents them and makes me feel prohibited about what they could do, and is entirely wrong. I think it's entirely depressing that on a daily basis we read of increasing behaviours and cultures that are absolutely fundamentally wrong, they're offensive, they're damaging, even to the point of murder of women simply enjoying themselves exactly as every other member of society should do. Why on earth, in this day and age, we're in a position where we're actually segregating between the sexes about who can have a good night out, enjoyable, and who can't? It's absolutely criminal that this behaviour continues. I think the motion demonstrates a huge amount and raft of activities that the city council and our partner organisations, including the Police and Crime Commission, a number of charities, undertake to make women give an impression of safety, but it needs to get beyond an impression of safety. I would like to see that we move through, we continue to the work of this city council and our partners. We advocate everywhere possible that safety for all is an absolutely essential requirement, that this city is a city of sanctuary means exactly that, that women, residents and visitors, equally all citizens, should be able to enjoy, live, work and play this great city, and I would like to think that the work and actions of this city and our partner organisation would lead us to a point where it gets to a position in society where people, all people, women, men, transgender, everyone, is able to leave their door, go out, enjoy an evening, a daytime's activity, wearing whatever they choose to wear, behaving as they choose freely to do, and not feel inhibited, threatened or even attacked. I think it's absolutely shameful that we're having this motion, but it's important that we underlie the fine work of this city council and our partners, our second the motion. but it's important that we underlie the fine work of this city council and our partners, our second the motion.
Thank you councillor, thank you councillor Kemp. Can I invite councillor Hobson to speak? Councillor Hobson wishes not to speak, okay, thank you very much. I do apologise if on my list is an administrative error, but I do have a T B C next to a name. Can I ask that councillor, is that for me to cross you out or confirm you as a speaker councillor Smith? I'm crossing you out, thank you very much. Councillor Morrissey, you'd like to speak? Yeah, please.
I too am shocked and ashamed really that this motion has had to come to council again this evening. Whilst it is wise to protect young women and to help them protect themselves, one of the things that we are forgetting and a plea that I am making to all of you tonight is that it's a majority of young men who do the inappropriate things to young women. As a council, we are looking to be ambassadors and champions for the white ribbon organisation. I've been on some training with them this afternoon and I said I would do everything that I could to encourage more people to do that. So I'm very grateful, Lord Mayor, for you letting me speak tonight. And please, can I encourage you, it's our young men who need to be educated to respect our young women. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Morrissey. Can I invite councillor Penny Evans to reply? Councillor Penny Evans has no further comments to make. Can we, can I ask, is this motion agreed? Thank you very much. Moving on to item seventeen. That's the notice of motion promoting active travel all year round. Can I invite councillor Kane to move this motion and to be seconded by councillor Stone? Councillor Kane.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. A couple of years ago, during the winter, I was walking into the civic centre via Sandyford Road and the, that strange ramp bridge thing over the entrance to the Northumberland University car park was so icy that all pedestrians had basically formed a system where they had to hold each other up and down either side using the railings because there was no grip whatsoever to walk on. And it was fine for fit people, young people, but of course anybody who was elderly, anybody in a wheelchair, anybody pushing a pushchair would have had no chance at all. Meanwhile, below us on the dual carriageway, the cars were flying up and down quite comfortably side by side. And this is reflected in statistics. Winter injuries from ice are much higher for pedestrians and cyclists than they are for motorists. And yet our entire gritting and treatment system is based around making roads safe for motorists and of course, public transport. This is, breaches the whole idea of the transport hierarchy where walking comes first and then cycling and then public transport and then finally the private driving. And it's an equalities issue. If you look at the car ownership patterns across Newcastle, none of the riverside wards, the most deprived wards, have more than 50% car ownership. So those people have to walk or cycle to get around. Obviously, it makes life difficult for people who are infirm. But those who have read the book Invisible Women by Caroline Cradwell-Perrith, and I'm chunked through it, will know that the first chapter investigates gritting as a gender equality issue because the standard gritting policy which we have adopted and many other cities have adopted by chance actually reflects a typical male daily routine rather than the typical female daily routine. And she makes a very strong case for the idea that gritting is an equalities issue. Within Newcastle, some of our best walking and cycling routes, like the city stadium in my own ward and Armstrong Bridge, to name a two, these are ones that are always flagged up to me as problems, become ice rinks during the winter, so you just can't use them. So if we're serious about the transport hierarchy and moving people towards active travel, it has to be 365 days a year because as soon as you force them back into cars, back into public transport, they're less likely to walk into town or cycle into town. So what I'm really looking for here is the cabinet to acknowledge the transport hierarchy in that. This is perfectly normal across Europe and some local authorities are starting to push the winter treatment of major cycle and walking routes. I'll quote Lib Dem Run York as an example. They're really starting to push ahead with this. While I hope, wish councillor Bell a swift recovery and, you know, I'm very disappointed in this amendment because it takes all the teeth out of the proposal and says we will consider, considering talking about it, blah, 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 blah. There is no commitment to adopting this shift as council policy. So I am afraid, Lord Mayor, I cannot accept the amendment.
Thank you very much. Can I invite councillor Stone, who is to second the motion?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I will speak now if that's okay, in seconding this motion. I am very much in support of what my colleague has brought before us tonight. It is clearly an issue that affects many people in the city and many parts of the city. Councillor Kane mentioned some instances of bridges in his ward. I have part of the Armstrong Bridge over the Dean in my ward and I have been aware in the past that has been a death trap frankly to anybody, cyclist or pedestrian who's tried to use that during occasions of black ice. I've had calls just this last week when we had the winter weather in recent days and freezing temperatures whereby people were telling me that they could not get about at all safely on the pavements in my ward because the water froze, the wet pavements had frozen overnight and there was black ice everywhere and a number of falls and injuries took place. And I would make, the other observation I would make on this issue is with regard to grit bins. I'm led to understand that it is the council's policy not to refill grit bins anymore. They claim that's part of the austerity cuts. I understand that the principle behind grit bins was that people would be able to use that supply of grit to deal with any local particular problems in their, in their streets or on their roads and pavements. I am told that has been no longer continued because the concern is that people will use that grit supply to grit their own drives and not do anywhere else. That is not really a ringing endorsement of the council's policy and proclaimed intention of being a cooperative council when it encourages people to go out and enable and facilitate people to do things for themselves in their communities. That needs to be reviewed. That is, it is a nonsense and people look at, look to the council and say, why on earth is this council even bothering having to have the grit bins still there if they are going to increase the supply even, even once, once a year in terms of, in terms of topping up those bins? So that is not a huge outlay to this council, but it would make a big difference to many neighbourhoods and in safety of many older people. So I think the council should look at that.
Thank you councillor Stone. Can I invite councillor Kilgawa to move the amendment to be seconded by councillor Higgins?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Again, I'm standing in for councillor Bell. I'd like to thank councillor Kane for his comments. I'm particularly grateful for him highlighting equalities as an issue. However, regardless of what our aspirations may be and regardless of what anecdotes people may bring to council, we have to acknowledge that we are actually in a contract for winter services and cycle routes don't form part of that contract currently. We would have to vary that contract and our partner doesn't currently have the, coalesced, doesn't currently have the equipment needed to grit cycle routes. That contract's already subject to RPI increases, so places a strain on our budget as it is. Any gritting of cycle paths couldn't be done instead of what is being done because it formed breach of contract. So it would have to be done in addition to it. We would have to purchase new machines, provide staff and resources to do all the gritting ourselves and we simply don't have a revenue budget that could do this. Gritting, more likely using brine, if cycle routes could be done. However, it's a question of what other aspects of the council's services, many of which are statutory, we would not deliver in its place. Similar to the earlier motion on investment in roads and footpaths where underinvestment from national funding has seen road and footpath quality deteriorate. We're not alone in not being able to provide the right amount of funding to deliver these services, let alone the additional things that we'd all like to see delivered. If we were to deliver these treatments, we'd have to fund the purchase of entirely new mechanised vehicles that could do the job and then the cost of the operation of them by members of staff. But to be clear, we are not ruling it out and would never rule it out and we will keep it under review. However, this is subject to whether or not we can source additional funding over and above that which is currently available to enable us to make these changes. We continually review the way we deliver services and whether or not we can move forward with an approach to grit. Our key cycle routes will again be made before next winter along with consideration of funding opportunities to do so. I'm very disappointed that councillor Kane couldn't accept this as a friendly motion as it was intended. But nevertheless, I move the amendment, Lord Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Kilgawa. Councillor Higgins to second this amendment?
Yes, thank you, Lord Mayor. I'll try and follow councillor Woodock's earlier example of being very concise in my submission. Just one or two comments I'd like to make though, and I do share councillor Kilgawa's disappointment that we couldn't have this as a friendly amendment agreed across council. Because I agree with a great deal of what's actually in the motion itself. I'm a keen cyclist, as members will know, even in the cold and icy weather. I can fully empathise with the survey that's come out of Sweden saying that injuries during icy conditions are three times as high for pedestrians and cyclists because I've still got the bruises to bear that out, including some spectacular accidents around the city at various times during the winter. So I can fully empathise with that. I guess really it's the question about resources because when I was listening to some of the earlier presentations from across the other side of the council chamber, I was doing some mental arithmetic about the costs of some of the ideas that were coming out. And yesterday I sat in finance committee and we were going through the details of the medium term plan and really scratching our heads about where we're going to find the money over the next two or three years to meet our statutory commitments towards the most vulnerable people in the city. So I guess my question might be to some of the earlier presenters is, I think it's where's the magic money tree, you know, because we'd love to do all these things but we simply don't have the resources. So I think the amendment coming from councillor Bell, which as I say, I'm disappointed it couldn't be accepted, agrees much of what councillor Kane is mentioning in his motion, but is basically saying that with the financial challenges that we face, we need to be careful. We need to think things through carefully. And I just want to make one observation about the need to be robust in trying to get people out of their motorcars. And I agree with that because levering people out of their motorcars onto public transport or onto cycles is very, very difficult and sometimes we have to be tough about that. So perhaps councillor Kane might suggest to your, to the Lib Dem's spokesperson on public transport that he should stop defending motorists who transgress into bus lanes in the city centre and criticising the council for imposing financial penalties because it's only by doing things like that that we actually get people out of their motorcars. So I support the motion. I would urge perhaps members on the other side of the council chamber to think again and support this motion, which I think is sensible and practical in the circumstances. Thanks very much.
Thank you councillor Higgins. Can I invite councillor Taylor, who wishes to speak?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I think on this side of the chamber, we're well aware of the budgetary problems, but we have declared a climate emergency. We are trying to get people out of their cars, onto bicycles, onto the pavements and they can't do it. Last week I was out on my bicycle in the icy conditions. I slid on the ice. Fortunately, I didn't come off. An electric bike is actually very heavy and less likely to go. But my friend fell and went on black ice and has badly injured her shoulder. I'm not sure she's going to be cycling again in the near future. If we don't tackle this problem, then we will not get people to cycle in the winter. If they don't cycle in the winter, they get used to using their car again and they may not go back to using the bike later on in the year when the weather's better. The reason we didn't accept this amendment, I mean, look at it, continue to consider the feasibility. I mean, weasely words are that. It's basically, you're saying no. So, no, we don't accept the amendment. It's better than nothing, but I'm afraid it's not good enough.
Thank you very much councillor Taylor. Can I invite councillor Kane to reply, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I think councillor Taylor summed it up. If we're serious about doing these things, if there's a will, there's a way. You know, they are weasel words in the amendment and that's why I cannot accept it. So, thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you very much. That's loud and clear. Can we get ready to vote on the amendment? On your devices. Anyone experiencing difficulties? Yep. What are your intentions? Did you hear that? No. No, so that's two no. What's the numbers, please? Twenty-eight voting, sixteen against. Is the amended motion agreed? Thank you very much. Moving on to item eighteen. Make football a fair game. Can I call on councillor Campion to move this motion, which is to be seconded by councillor Ave?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm not a native Geordie, as you can probably tell from my accent, but one thing that did make it down south to where I'm from is that Newcastle is a proud football city. We have a football team up here that although we might necessarily not be proud of their performances at the moment, we're proud of the heritage and we're proud of the fans and the people that support them. But having now moved up here, having lived in Newcastle for a few years, having experienced our city, we're more than just Newcastle United. We're Dennington travellers, we're Great Park FC, we're Red Hall Farm Football Club. We are a city of footballing communities. And I think that that's something we can hopefully all agree on, that football is an issue that transcends politics, that it is something that actually we all want to see thrive in our city. We don't want to see the tiny community football clubs that are more than just a pitch and 22 players. We don't want to see them disappear. I'm calling on council to make Newcastle the first major city to sign up to the Fair Game manifesto, putting local football teams first, calling on a fairer funding structure that means our local football teams, as I say, they are community hubs, will be able to survive and thrive. I really hope that this is a motion that the full chamber can get behind and that you will pass this and leave Newcastle leading the way on football. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much councillor Campion. Councillor Ave. You second the motion? Do you reserve the right to speak? Just second the motion? Thank you very much. Are there, I don't have any names here. Does anybody wish to speak? Councillor Higgins?
Yes, thank you, Lord Mayor. I couldn't resist the temptation to talk about football, especially with a southerner coming up and telling us in the north east about how to run our football. I think the thing about it, I mean, when I saw this motion, I did a little bit of reading up about this particular project. I think it's great and I think we've got Gateshead local team who have signed up to it, but not Newcastle United. And in fact, I don't think we've got any of the Premier League teams involved in this particular project at the moment. I think the point I wanted to make though was about this, about sort of writing to government and things like that. I'm always a bit wary, and I say this as a politician, about politicians getting too involved in running football. And I think we all saw the gory sight of Boris Johnson with his football shirt over his collar and tie at the European Championships and things like that. And if you'd asked Boris to name three members of the England team, I think he would have struggled. So I think it's about how we get the balance right and ensuring that football at all levels. And I support Blue Star FC in my own ward and they're a tremendous little club and I get a smile there from the Lord Mayor because he knows about that fabulous little club doing some great work with youngsters in the area. And I think it's very important that we do have support for local football. But it needs to be led through fans. It needs to be fan-led. And in fact, when we, I thought it was quite ironic that when they set up this fan-led review into football, I think it was chaired by Tracy Crouch, review into football, I think it was chaired by Tracy Crouch, they only had one representation of fans on the committee, it was Kevin Miles, nobody else. So it was supposed to be fan led, but they only actually had one person there. So I support the motion, but I would suggest at local level that we have some discussions with the Newcastle United Supporters' Trust and get some input into the club that way and get the fans involved to actually get this scheme on board. Thanks very much, Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor Higgins. Can I invite councillor Campion to reply?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Recognise the comments, I agree, fan led is incredibly important, but I think that it's one of those instances where we need to be seen as local champions, as local leaders, to be leading from the front on this and to be seen as the people who are actually pushing things forward. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you very much councillor Campion. Is this motion agreed or do we need a vote?
Agreed.
Agreed? Thank you very much. Well, that concludes tonight's formal business. New year brings new look, new challenges and can I wish each and every one of you and your family members good health and let's do what we need to do to keep ourselves safe. Can I remind you, the next meeting will take place at 6pm on Wednesday, 2nd of February 2022. Venue to be confirmed. Thank you very much. Good night, council. Thank you.